Good evening and welcome to the 1,214th Regular Meeting and Public Hearing of the Livonia City Planning Commission. I wish to inform all interested persons in our audience that for petitions on tonight's agenda which involve a question of zoning, the Planning Commission will make a recommendation to City Council, and the City Council after holding their own public hearing makes the final determination as to whether the petition is approved or denied. The Planning Commission holds the only public hearing on request for preliminary plaits and/or vacating petitions. The Commission's recommendation is forwarded to the City Council for the final determination as to whether the petition is accepted or rejected. If a petition requesting a waiver of use or a site plan is denied tonight, the petitioner will have 10 days in which to appeal the decision in writing to City Council. Resolutions adopted by the City Planning Commission will become effective seven days after the date of adoption. Planning Commission and professional staff have reviewed each of these petitions upon their filing. Staff has furnished the Commission with both approving and denying resolutions, which the Commission may or may not use depending on the outcome of the proceedings tonight. If our Secretary is ready, please call the roll.
Mr. Donara.
Here.
Mr. Banjero.
Here.
Mr. Long.
Here.
Mr. Ventura.
Is here.
Karen Magno is here. Chairman Wilshaw.
Is here. Also with us tonight we have Mark Toramina, we have Jacob Uhazi, and we also have Stephanie Reese, all from our Planning Department, and they will assist us in giving background information on our agenda item. With that, we only have one public hearing on our agenda. Secretary, would you like to read that out?
Petition 2024-04-08-01 submitted by Hubble, Roth &amp; Clark on behalf of the City of Livonia, requesting approval of all plans in connection with a proposal to construct a new Livonia Senior Wellness Center and make renovations to the Kirksey Recreation Center at 15100 Hubbard Street located in the southeast corner of Five Mile Road and Hubbard Roads in the northeast quarter of Section 22.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Mr. Toramina.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, this is a request to construct a new Senior Wellness Center and to expand and remodel the Kirksey Recreation Center, which is at Hubbard and Five Mile Roads. The Recreation Center was built in the early 2000s after the city acquired the west half of the former Bentley High School property, which was about 17 acres. The existing Rec Center is roughly 140,000 square feet. The existing Senior Center is located on the city campus along Farmington Road. That structure was built originally as a church and then was expanded in the mid-1980s and remodeled in the early 2000s. With the construction of the new Senior Wellness Center as part of the Kirksey Recreation Center, the old Senior Center will eventually be torn down to make room for the future redevelopment of a portion of the city center. The new Senior Wellness Center will be on the east side of the Recreation Center. To accomplish this, the city is purchasing an additional 4.15 acres from the Livonia Public School District. In total, the new Senior Center will be about 31,000 square feet. This includes a new two-story, 10,600-square-foot addition to the building, plus the conversion of the former gymnastics center, which is currently occupied by fitness equipment. The fitness area will be removed or moved to the main gym necessitating the construction of a new gym on the west side of the Rec Center. So just to get everyone familiar with this plan, this is the showing a portion of the Rec Center property today. The existing building is shown in this gray pattern. The Senior Wellness addition to the east side of the building would locate here, and then the new gym would be provided on the west side of the building. That's shown in green. The new gym measures roughly 8,900 square feet. The exterior of the both of the additions will complement the architecture of the existing structure. This includes the building's signature triangular brick pattern. The new Senior Wellness Center will have its own entrance facing Five Mile Road. That will feature a two-story glass curtain wall. There will also be a semicircular vehicle drop-off and pickup area with a cupboard, overhang, or portica chair, similar to the front entrance of the Recreation Center. There'll also be a number of site changes. These include a new entrance drive from Five Mile Road, as well as a new dedicated parking lot for the Senior Wellness Center that will have roughly 120 parking spaces. New stormwater detention will be provided. Those will be in the form of new basins constructed adjacent to Five Mile Road. Several pathways and sidewalks will have to be relocated, and then all new landscaping will be provided for the additional development. Tonight, we have the project architect, Adriana Melchor, from Hubble, Roth &amp; Clark, as well as Ted Davis, the city's Director of Parks and Recreation. They're both here available here to provide additional information. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Toramina. Is there correspondence?
We have a couple of items' correspondence. First is from our Engineering Division dated May 16th that reads, "In accordance with your request, the Engineering Division has reviewed the above-referenced petition. We have no objections to the project at this time, but would like to note the following items. Number one, the subject parcel was assigned the address of 15100 Hubbard Road. Should additional addresses be needed, the owner will need to contact the department once permitting has been completed. Two, the existing parcel is currently serviced by public sewer, sanitary sewer, storm sewer, and water. The submitted drawings indicate proposed additions to the existing systems, as well as onsite detention. Based on the submitted drawings, we do not believe there will be any negative impacts to the existing systems, but a full engineering review will be completed during the permitting process. Number three, the drawings indicate proposed stormwater detention, but do not include detailed information. The development will be required to provide detention per the latest version of the Wayne County Stormwater Ordinance, and will be required to submit drawings to the Wayne County for permitting since they are intending to connect to a Wayne County-owned storm system. In addition to the storm permit, any disturbances within the Five Mile Road right-of-way will require permits through the Wayne County Department of Public Service, including drive approach and sidewalk removals and placements. All of the permits will be through the City of Livonia." Now, a letter assigned by David Lear, Assistant City Engineer. Next is a letter from the Fire Department dated May 21st that reads, "We have no objections to this proposal with the following stipulations. Number one, provide an automatic sprinkler system and onsite hydrants shall be located between 50 feet and 100 feet from the unobstructed fire department connection. Two, provide, please adhere to code in the official submitted plan set of access parameters for emergency vehicles, including but not limited to roadway dimensions, unobstructed access, including parking lots, fire lane signage, dead-end roadways. T- or Y-turnaround arrangements shall be permitted. Access must be maintained throughout the construction process also. Number three, submit plans and permits for sprinkler monitoring and fire alarms. Four, doors powered by magnetic locks or accessed by fobs or key cards shall have power dropped to them with the activation of a fire alarm. A further detailed plan review will take place when this division receives an official plan set." And that letter is signed by Brian Kukla, Fire Marshal. Next, we have a letter of no objection coming from the Division of Police, the Sergeant of, excuse me, by the Department of Police, signed by Paul Walter, Sergeant of the Traffic Bureau. Similar letter of no objection coming from the Department of Finance, signed by Connaught Campula, Chief Accountant, and then an indication of no objection coming from the City Treasurer, signed by Sue Nash, and that letter is dated May 29th. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Toramina. Is there any questions of our planning staff?
Mr. Ventura.
Mr. Wilshaw. Mr. Toramina, just to be real clear, we're going to put a 10,621-square-foot addition on the east end of the Rec Center that's two stories. That will create 20,000 square feet of new space. In addition to that, we're going to build 8,855 square feet of new space for a gymnasium on the west end. That's how we get to 30,000 square feet of new construction.
Great. I believe the Senior Wellness Center altogether is roughly 30,000 square feet. I'm going to let Mr. Davis clarify that. Understand that the addition to the east side of the Recreation Building for the Senior Wellness Center, not all of that will be usable floor area of that first level. Some of that space is open to below. The architect can describe that. But I believe the 30,000 is roughly the added square face, maybe for both floors and a gymnasium. Why don't we let the, either the architect or Mr. Davis clarify that?
I think either one of us can answer, but...
One second. Before we get to that, is there any other questions for the planning staff? Okay, no other questions for the planning staff? Mr. Davis?
Thank you. Good evening. Good to be here. I think that 10,000-square-foot addition on the side, most of that is going to be lobby space and offices. It will be a two-story opening. The former gymnastics space is approximately 10,000 square feet. That is getting a second floor, so that becomes 20,000 square feet with the additional 10. That gives us the roughly 30,000 square feet of the new Senior Wellness Center.
And then in addition to that, there's 8,800 square feet on the west end.
On the west end, that's a gymnasium, yes.
Gymnasium. So we're close to 40,000 square feet by the time we get done with all the construction.
Yes, but we're only adding on, I mean, there's some additional floor space also in the Rec Center, so I think we're adding about 50,000 square feet total to the facility.
And affected space, right? Wait, thank you. That makes it clear. Just trying to get all the numbers together.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Ventura. Well, if there's no other questions, I think it's time for Mr. Davis to give his presentation. Good evening and welcome to our meeting. Let us know what you're building.
Thank you. I mean, Mark Toramina did a fantastically thorough job in going over the proposal before you of the site plan and everything. I mean, we are again asking for the bill, the addition on to the current Recreation Center of the Senior Wellness Center, and along with that, a gymnasium. There'll be interior renovations to the Rec Center as well. Some of the highlights of the project, and it's difficult because I'm a visual, so I like to see the pictures, but some of the highlights of the project are, the Senior Wellness Center really is, it's a bonus over, it's an upgrade in every conceivable way over what we have at the current Senior Center. You're looking at large multipurpose spaces on the main floor, updated kitchen, which will be able to accommodate the Meals on Wheels program that's currently being run out of there. We'll be able to increase party sizes, which are incredibly popular. On the second floor, we'll have, you know, multiple fitness spaces and then conference room spaces or meeting room spaces that will be able to accommodate large groups as well. That's really the key of this. We were talking about the bathrooms. We go from nine fixtures to 15 fixtures throughout the facility. Two elevators, one that will fit 25 to 30 people. That's fully accessible and will be able to accommodate EMS personnel if need be. I mean, this is just such an upgrade over what we currently have. On the Rec Center side, getting a brand-new gymnasium. We're taking, if you've been to the Rec Center, you see that we've put equipment into the former gymnastics space, and it works, but it feels disjointed, and it feels like that add-on, that addition to your house that isn't quite right. And with this new, you know, we're going to break out into the main gym areas, taking really Main Gyms 1 and 2 over. Main Gym 1 will basically be an addition of the Fit Hub, of the fitness area. So it will look seamless with two-story elevation. And then the second, the Main Court 2, that becomes multipurpose space rooms, and then the track gets filled in on the second level, and it really becomes a cardio studio. So huge upgrades and big fundamental changes to the Rec Center. It's really going to change the way it looks, but the goal is, you're walking in there and you're thinking, this is how it was always meant to look, right? It just needed to be refreshed that way. We're excited about the connections. I mean, the usefulness of these combining of the spaces, we're not recreating the wheel, right? We have an existing fitness center. We have existing pools. We have walking tracks. Seniors now gain access to all that through a, you know, through a fob entry system, so we're not duplicating services. We're simply adding on and really helping with economies of scale in that. Just makes our pool, you know, our track, our fitness area, just that much more user-friendly and useful to another population. Right now, there are two very distinct populations that use the two centers, and over time, we see that crossover just growing and continue to attract new seniors to use the facility. So that's a quick overview of this. Again, we're, you know, on the west end, we're adding the new gym space to kind of take over, to supplement what we're losing with Main Gyms 1 and 2. That will be a hardwood floor. That's going to be a smaller court than what we currently have in Main Gym 1 and 2. It'll really be one full-size court mostly. You know, we think that we're not going to feel the loss of the gym space because we have so many classes and programs and gyms right now because we don't have adequate space for those programs. So with the addition of those multipurpose rooms, you know, or Main 2 was, we really won't feel we're going to, we won't feel we're going to miss the gym space at all. We'll have more than adequate gym space.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Davis. And as you're giving your presentation, our, Mark is showing on the screen some of the renderings, so our folks at home can see some of these beautiful renderings that you've been able to provide to us, so...
That is the Senior Center lobby right there, and that was, you can see, I mean, one of the things we're happy about is, if you've been to the current Senior Center, your point-of-sale location or your check-in location is on the complete opposite side of the offices. Here, you're going to have the offices behind it. They'll be secured, and you'll also be able to have full-time staff actively supporting that front desk reception point-of-sale location. Seniors asked for a fireplace. That was an add-on. Originally, that was a glass wall, and that was added on to give them a fireplace. And actually, much like DPW space, if you've been there, behind that fireplace is a small conference room, and that's where, again, you'll be able to take small interpersonal meetings if you need to meet with someone privately right off the lobby. We love it for, again, the support it's going to provide. We're redoing the Rec Center front desk area. That's, again, if you've been to the Rec Center, it does some things really, really well. One of them is a choke point when you come in. It really chokes it off. We think there's a better way. We're going to hopefully create better flow through there, more stations to be able to push people through faster. I mean, that's something we always hear, there's lines. And I'll be the first to say, like, I will tell my staff, lines are not a problem. Lines mean we're popular. Don't worry about lines. But we do want to move people through faster, so that is, again, that's going to shift over in the middle of its current space right now. It'll be glassed all the way in, full door, so we'll have some security there, and again, though, you know, frontline staff there will feel approachable but safe. And again, we're three point-of-sale locations right on the front. There'll be a check-in on the side for members and people checking in to utilize the facility. And then where the former handicap entrance or exit was, that will become the new exit. So you'll have an entry-exit flow to the building, which we think will make it feel a lot better, move people through a lot quicker, and that's what we want. We want it to be, we want people to check in, but what we want to do is fast as we possibly can as well.
Excellent. Let's see if there's any questions from any of the commissioners, from Mr. Davis.
I do have a, I have a couple. Thank you, Ted, for this presentation. This is really exciting, and I'm really excited to see the new Senior Center. I have just a couple of questions for you. One, how much square footage are we losing on the Rec Center, and how is that going to impact programming, if at all? And then the second question, can you talk a little bit about the timeline of the construction and what's going to happen until we get to the final product?
Sure. I think it's difficult to say we're losing square feet. I mean, we're losing the gymnastics space, so we're losing 10,000 square feet on that side, approximately. We're gaining back 8,800 square feet on the west side with the gym addition. But we're also, on the, on the Mac, our Main 2, we're adding a second level. We're adding multipurpose rooms on the first floor, so we're, I think we're coming out actually probably a few thousand square feet ahead, and it's not really the space. I mean, it's always odd because the Rec Center, I always say, is 130,000 square feet, and yet somehow we're room poor. Because, again, you have these expansive lobby spaces, right? We have two great pools, a walking track, four full, you know, gymnasiums, but yet, when you look at like, you know, we offer 100 different classes a week through there, not including swim lessons. And yet, we don't have really great classroom space, you know, whether it's fitness classes or even, you know, lecture series or anything like that. We don't have good spaces for that. So that was really our goal with this renovation is to, it's not about losing square footage or gaining square footage, about increasing the functionality of the square footage we do have, and we feel we've done that with this plan. Timeline on construction, so groundbreaking will occur second week of July. I feel like I should knock on wood, and that's actual earth-moving. The actual groundbreaking ceremony is July 17th, Monday, at 1:00. So we anticipate actual construction groundbreaking that second week of July, and you're not going to feel any impact on that. It's all going to be on the east and west side. I mean, you'll see the fencing go around, especially on the north end, and kind of wrap around the sides of the building, but there'll be no change in the operation until we get to September. September is where we're going to start to feel it. The gymnastics space gets cleared out in the beginning of September, so we feel we'll be able to move that equipment, spacing it, spacing it a little tighter through our current Fit Hub. We used to have equipment upstairs on the second level quite a bit. We've thinned that out. We'll put more equipment back up there. And then we will place a good portion of the equipment in Mac Gym 1, and that's what will remain for the duration of the construction. So that will be the first thing that Rec Center members will feel, is that loss of the gymnastics space, but we feel we can accommodate that and still maintain all the functionality. We're still going to have three full basketball courts that will be operational. Really, the only programs we're planning on cutting right now are our adult basketball leagues. We've been in contact with our rentals to let them know things are tight. We've contacted LJL. We've talked with them already. It's not that we don't want them to use the facility, but again, things are going to be tight for the period of time. We'll operate that way until July, and we anticipate in July, the west gym will now be complete, and at that point, we will now, construction will move into Main Gyms 1 and 2. We'll lose a little portion of the Fit Hub. They'll have to build a temporary wall. Somewhere in that timeframe, the Senior Center should be complete end of summer. We would then complete the Main Gyms 1 and 2 in that area of the Rec Center early December of '25.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Donara. Is there other questions for our Parks and Rec Director? Mr. Ventura?
Mr. Wilshaw. Mr. Davis, can you give us kind of a broad brush overview of the cost of the project in total, sources of funds that are going to be available to make it happen, and then talk a little bit about your excellent recapture of those funds that are going to retire whatever debt we're going to incur to do this?
Sure. So, total cost of the project, I can give you a guess right now because we don't have a guaranteed maximum price from our construction manager. We just put out bid packets last week. We feel right now a good ballpark is $26 million for total project cost. We have $8 million thanks to Wayne County. We have $3 million in community project funding from Haley Stephens. We have 1.25 million in community project funding from Congresswoman Rashida Tlaib. We have $3 million from the state of Michigan, and we have $2 million that are from 208, Parks and Recreation Fund balance, unexpected, unexpended fund balance, and the remainder will be offset by, with the general fund. As far as our current millage, which is sufficient to pay all of our capital and pay the bond debt we have, we're, I will say, we are incurring no bond debt with this project right now. So, I mean, I don't want to say, you know, absolute certainty, but I don't feel we're going to be, you know, increasing our bond debt payments on this project at all. So we currently, our current millage covers our bond payments, our capital, and subsidizes the Recreation Center operations to tune of about 15%. Kind of the gold standard in community recreation facilities is 70% cost recovery. We currently run at about 85% cost recovery. So we are doing it better and more efficiently than the vast majority of facilities throughout the United States that are community recreation centers. So we feel, that's a credit to the staff we've had, from Tom Murphy, from Ron Renke, Karen Kapchanek, Lyle, Trudell. Certainly, they have all done a fantastic job, and I, you know, I kind of have been given the keys to a Ferrari and told, "Don't screw up." I've managed to, you know, not do that yet, so...
Great. That sounds like we've got the finances and this thing well in hand. Thank you very much.
You do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilshaw.
Thank you, Mr. Ventura. Any other questions?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Karen Magno.
Ted, you're, now that you're putting the Senior Center with the Rec Center, what efficiencies will you have from the old Senior Center and the Rec Center being separate? What type of efficiencies do you expect to have?
Yeah, I think that's a great question, a great deal, really. I mean, if you look at just the physical structure itself, right, we're, we already have swimming pools. We're not going to be recreating swimming pools. We already have a fitness center. We already have a walking track. Attaching the build, the Senior Wellness Center, onto the existing Rec Center, you know, gives all of our seniors access to those facilities, and that was really the big driver of this. And then you have staffing as well, where, you know, we have a facility manager that already runs the Rec Center. That person will be able to run the Senior Center, too. Front desk operations, point-of-sale, again, it will be the same person overseeing both sides of it. You know, part-time building supervision, you know, at two separate physical locations, we're running staff in different locations. Now, we're going to combine that staff, so we feel there'll be efficiencies on the user end, I mean, our seniors, in what they get access to and what they'll have to show for this new facility, and again, being attached to the Rec Center. And then operationally, we feel there are great efficiencies. We'll be able to, with full-time and part-time staff, to where, the hope is to even, we continue to offer the great program we have, but even to increase that program as time goes on.
Good. Thank you. Another question for you, the Senior Center, so the seniors have access to the Rec Center, it's only one-way access. Rec Center people can't get into the Senior Center.
Yes, they can. If they are seniors, they certainly can.
They can go both ways.
They can go both ways, and we think that, we think, again, that, that traffic, that two-way traffic is only going to increase over time. So I'm not a senior. I would not be able to fob over, and I'm not a senior yet, but when I am a senior someday, if I have a Rec Center membership and I, you know, have, I want to access over the Senior Center, I will certainly be able to fob over and utilize the Senior Center, and then I will be able to do the same thing, fob back. So imagine your day is you get there and you take a water aerobics class at 10:00 in the morning, and then you decide to go over to the Senior Center and you want to play some cards, and then you stay over there and have lunch, and then you come back over and you walk the track for a little while. Then you go home and take a nap, or maybe you hit one of the three golf courses. Who knows?
Maybe so. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Karen Magno. Any other questions? Just a couple, Mr. Davis, that I had written down. Because the Senior Center currently does not have elevators, it's basically a one-floor structure, and now you're going to have a two-floor structure. You already mentioned that one of them's going to be able to accommodate EMS if necessary.
Yes.
And as we know from City Hall and its woes with elevators going down, what would happen in the event of elevators not functioning at the Senior Center?
Yeah, I mean, the first, the one thing I will say is, I feel this facility in some ways is such an anomaly. I mean, the Rec Center has an elevator, has had an elevator for 20 years. I can count on my one hand in the nine years I've been here how often the elevator's been down, yet it seems in other facilities, I can count on my one hand today how many times the elevator's been down.
Exactly.
I don't feel we're really going to have the kind of maintenance issues there, but again, we do have two staircases, and then we do, I think we have three total staircases up to the second floor. We'll also have access points on the second floor into the Rec Center where they'll have, be able to go around and have access to, again, either stairs or the Rec Center elevator as well. So we feel in that, in the case of that situation, we'll have multiple ways to move people in and out. One thing also is, you know, the generator we're going to have, if we do lose power, elevators are going to remain operational. That's one of our goals, right? Second floor will lose some functionality, but elevators will continue to operate even in loss of power. So we feel confident that, and just like every building, and there's a great deal of trepidation, I'd say, with our senior population in this, again, anything new. Change is always frightening, right? And I jokingly, I go there and give a monthly talk at the Senior Center, and there was a great deal of fear regarding the two stories, and I asked the question, "How many people have been to St. Mary's?" And I said, "Just show hands," and everyone raised their hands, and I said, "How many people have been to the second floor or above at St. Mary's?" And everyone raised their hand, and so we seemed to do it in other... And so we, we seem to do it in other places quite easily, and somehow, we have this fear in a new building. I think we're going to be pleasantly surprised at how smoothly it does go and how few problems we do have.
I appreciate that answer, and some of my questions do come from folks I've talked to that use the senior center.
Sure.
So it's, it's not a surprise to you, some of these questions, but in, you sort of alluded to it, actually, with your answer about the elevators in the sense of the generator. The rec center is currently often used during emergency times in the city as a warming center or as a facility that people within the city can go to if they have problems at their house or need to get away for some reason and go somewhere safe. And I'm assuming that the generator will be expanded to serve the senior center, and the senior center itself can also now become one of those facilities for residents in an emergency. Is that correct?
It could. I think our plan right now is that we would try to maintain services and programs at the senior center, and we would let the rec center serve as the emergency shelter if we're in that scenario. Right now, that is our plan. But of course, things can change, and it could easily, we could make the senior center the heating and cooling station if need be, but the goal with the generator is that both spaces are going to be functional and comfortable regardless of the temperature outside.
Excellent. Okay, very good. And then the last and most important question I have is, are you still going to have Wii bowling available for the seniors?
Yeah, I don't see us, again, I don't see us eliminating or cutting any programs. I think the goal is, again, to expand upon what we currently offer.
Okay, great. Yeah, that's something that I know some people find very important. They, they have leagues and everything else, so.
I like the Wii as much as the next person does.
Very good. All right, well, thank you very much for your presentation.
You're welcome.
Is there any other questions from any of our commissioners? If not, anyone else in the audience wishing to speak on this item? I see no one else wishing to speak.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for being here. And if there's no other questions or comments, then a motion would be in order.
I would like to offer an approving resolution.
Okay.
The request by the city of Livonia to construct a new Livonia Senior Wellness Center and make renovations to the Jack E. Kirksey Recreation Center at 15100 Hubbard is hereby approved, subject to City Council approval and the following conditions. One, the site plan identified as sheet number C1A dated May 6, 2024, as revised and prepared by Hubble, Roth &amp; Clark Incorporated, is hereby approved and shall be adhered to. Two, all parking spaces except the required handicap spaces shall be double-stripe, 10 feet wide by 20 feet, 20 feet in length. Three, that the landscape plan identified as sheet number C6 dated May 6, 2024, as revised and prepared, prepared by Hubble, Roth &amp; Clark, is hereby approved, and any modifications thereto shall be pre-approved by the Planning Department. Four, the exterior elevations marked, the exterior elevations plans marked A201 and A202 dated May 3, 2024, as revised, prepared by Hubble, Roth &amp; Clark, are hereby approved. Five, all rooftop mechanical equipment shall be concealed from public view on all sides by screening compatible with the building's exterior, exterior materials. And six, the three walls of the trash dumpster shall, shall be constructed of building materials and complement the building. The enclosure gates shall be made of solid panel, steel or durable, long-lasting solid panel fiberglass.
How's your support?
Support?
All right, we have a motion by Mrs. DeNaro, supported by Mr. Bonjero, to approve. Is there any discussion on the motion? If there's no discussion, if the secretary is ready, please call the roll.
Mrs. DeNaro.
Aye.
Mr. Bonjero.
Aye.
Mr. Long?
Aye.
Mr. Ventura?
Aye.
Karen Magna votes aye. Chairman Wolschaw.
Votes aye. That motion will go to City Council in approving recommendation, and we wish you a lot of luck on this project. Thank you for coming tonight. We have one other item on our agenda, Mr. Secretary.
That is the approval of the minutes of the 1,213th Public Hearing and Regular Meeting held by the Planning Commission on May 14, 2024.
And all members were present with the exception of Mr. Long. Is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
All right, that's by Mr. Bonjero, supported by Mr. Ventura. If there's no objection, I think we can safely show five on approving that. I hear no objections. Mr. Long will abstain.
Sure.
And that has the minutes approved. That takes us to the end of our agenda. Is there any other business to come before the council or commission? No other business, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
So moved.
By Mr. DeNaro.
Supported.
By Mr. Long. And again, if there's no objection, I think we can show six on adjourning. I see no objections, so we'll mark six on adjourning. And I do want to thank Livonia Television staff for bringing this meeting to the community, and we are having a adjournment at 7:35 PM. Good night, Livonia. Thank you for watching.